Okay, so we're ready to come out of recess in our May 23rd special meeting. Our school board has heard second round interviews from two candidates. And at this time, we're going to begin entering into deliberations. I would like to ask Barb Dorn to kick us off in that process.
Thank you Chair Hadeen, and again, congratulations. Good news is you have two outstanding candidates to consider. The bad news is you can only hire one superintendent. And I really look forward to hearing your discussions around the interviews today. The first thing I'd like you to take a very short look at is the EMD form that each of you as board members filled out after the interviews. Thank you for doing that. I know it takes a lot of attention to listen to every answer to every question for every candidate. But thank you for doing that because it really does help guide the board in their decision. What you have in front of you is not a rating or a ranking of candidates. It's not something that is going to tell you who you should make an offer to. It does indicate perhaps where the board is leaning as far as your desired traits in the superintendent. Who receives more exceeds is perhaps more strongly viewed by the board. And whoever receives perhaps more D or does not meet, there's some perhaps areas of improvement there as well. It is simply one tool in the toolbox, as I mentioned last time. So please keep that in front of you, but I wouldn't put the entire decision in the hands of the EMD form. You have a lot of other things to consider. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Chair Hadeen to facilitate conversations about your two interviews today.
I would like to ask a process question and get your recommendation on that, Ms. Dorn, which is we did have some board members make reference calls. Would you suggest that we hear that feedback after we've revisited some of the strengths of our candidates?
Yes, great question. I would suggest you discuss one candidate at a time. So you discuss the first candidate that you interviewed today and you offer a strength or two apiece around the table. And then turn it over to the reference check folks to provide some real brief insight, very high level summation of what they learned in the reference check calls on that candidate. And then move to your second candidate, do a quick round of strengths around the table. And again, turn it over to your reference checkers to do a quick summation of what they learned about that candidate. And then you can start your actual deliberations toward who you're leaning toward making the offer to. Does that help?
Yes, that's very helpful. Thank you. I know that that was not a piece of information that we had available to us following the first interview. So I appreciate you clarifying where you've seen that be best practice. So I believe what we'll do today is we'll follow the order of candidate interviews in terms of discussing each candidate. So what I would like to do is we'll recognize around the table and share the strengths of our first candidate that was Dr. Tammy Champa. And I'd be, or Tamara Champa, I think she goes by Tammy. And if each board member would share one or two strengths that they saw in that candidate, and then we'll hear from our reference check people. I think there was an interest in going in order last time, but I'll let, I'll let whoever wants to go first. I see Director Davis is ready to go first. We'll start with that and then we'll just order around the table. That's what I'm just saying. I saw your hand raised. We can review the tapes, but I'm pretty sure I saw your hand raised.
Oh no, Director Bydl's giving me a look. Gets stored under something. So one of the things for Dr. Champa is I really liked her answer and her attention around the mental and mental behavioral wellness of children. And that space that she talked about in terms of what needs to be done there, resources need to be given, the importance of it. She seemed to really grasp the importance of the behavioral and mental challenges that a lot of kids are facing more so now than they have in the past.
Dr. Jessley?
So I would just like to reiterate what I said last time. Her passion for this work is amazing to me. It shows through in every answer that she gave. But I think in particular, how she would build confidence back in our school district by being present and invested and listening to her. I thought those were both great answers to that. And to live our mission statement every day, lean into the positive. I thought all of those things were, I mean, the way she answers them, it's, she does a lot better job than I do, obviously. But she's very passionate about it and it comes through in what she says.
I appreciate her approach to solving problems and also having ensuring that she has actionable and measurable outcomes.
What struck me remarkably was her background in finance is extraordinary. And although tonight she talked about she hasn't been in places where there has been budget cuts because she's been in places where there's growth, she very well understands the process. And it was clear to me.
A lot stuck out to me about Dr. Champa. The data focus that she has and the skill set that comes with that, not a lot of people have that. That's, that takes a very unique practice. And it's a learned practice, I guess I would, I would say. But meeting that mark, but also having those tremendous soft skills, very genuine and enthusiastic. The enthusiasm that she had, I felt was infectious. And I can see that carrying very well within our district.
So I think the things that stood out to me was that Dr. Champa had reflected on questions that she had answered last time and she was prepared for a specific follow up. And she had considered feedback that she had received from the board at the end of the interview session. When she asked us questions, she had taken that information and turned that into a reflection that she made available a week later. I thought that saw, that demonstrated to me a level of thinking and connection and possibly a commitment to follow through. And then demonstrating that. And I also saw that in response to the follow up discussion and the questions that we held at the end of the interview. I saw an ability to make connections across a diverse range of answers and find common themes, which I think is a personal, was a personal demonstrated strength.
I'm going to echo a lot of people because I'm last, but I'm her. But her, like they said, it's her excitement is, her enthusiasm is infectious. I liked how she researched us. She knew a lot about our fund balance and our declining enrollment numbers. And she is just very well spoken, very prepared. But yeah, her enthusiasm.
So everybody's had a chance to weigh in, but I would like to open the mic. If somebody had an item that they didn't feel got addressed, Director Tate?
I really appreciated what she spoke to in the Project Ignite in a way to get collaborative feedback from everyone in the district on ways to improve things.
Director Zuzik?
On our question regarding honoring tradition and history at the same time as recognizing the need for change. Her initial answer was good, but her follow up comments at the end of the interview were extraordinary and really showed great tact.
Would anybody else like to share a high point? Director Malm?
I apologize if this was already said, but when it was one of the, it was the last question she brought up bullying. The reporting form, love that idea, love that. I thought that was tremendous and in how it's facilitated and, you know, working to make sure that it's known within the district to address concerns.
Also with the scenario question about, I liked her answer. Chris, it's not always crystal clear. How do we get here, talk to everybody, listen intently? I like, she said that a lot. So find out, make sure every voice is heard, make sound decisions. But just not going, making sure that everybody who is right, supposed to be involved or involved. I just, yeah, I liked how she said it, not always crystal clear, but let's find and listen intently.
And I will say that her action plan that she handed out at the end, really it shows the thoughtfulness and she's really put some, she's, she's put it to work, what she's passionate about doing and put it all in writing here for us to see. So I thought that was great as well.
Any other feedback from members at the table? Okay, hearing none, I'd be interested in receiving feedback. The board would be interested in receiving feedback from those who reached out on reference checks. And please, not having had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Dorn about that, and which is totally fine, make sure that you take into consideration whatever guidance you were given with that regard. I want to be very respectful of people's private data. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be presenting on behalf of the people that did reference checks. And Ms. Dorn commented that it was a useful schema that we had. One person talked to board members in the respective district. One person spoke to community districts and then one person spoke to colleagues, supervisors and subordinates in each of the two districts. And it was just a good way to cover the waterfront on the reference checks. So regarding Dr. Champa, and this is a written statement, so I'll read it as is. Dr. Champa is engaged in the education provided to students. She's a great listener that makes people feel heard and valued. She has a history of collaboration and is responsive to concerns. Both, any of the references that we spoke to would have been sad to have seen her leave the district. Some major themes from another set of reference checks are that she is truly visionary. She knows herself, she knows the district, she knows what kids need. Multiple people spoke regarding her strength in the finance and budget area. And trust is very, very high in the community of Pine Island and for the Pine Island schools. And it wasn't like that when she got there. And there is no question from the people that we spoke to whether or not she would be ready to, to take this job, whether or not she'd be well prepared.
Thank you for that feedback. And as you were speaking, at the end of your speaking, I do realize that I forgot to acknowledge the board members who took the extra time to do that, make those calls and do that evaluation. And thank you very much. I think it's going to prove quite valuable. I know it feels like the world's moving really fast right now. And know that you are seen and acknowledged and appreciated for doing that extra work to support our decision.
Was there anything big I missed? Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, Director Zuzik. That was going to be my next question before we moved on. No, just to confirm that we were ready to move on to a discussion regarding the strengths of the second candidate who we interviewed, Dr. John Bezek. And I'd like to use the same process, although I will select a new starting person, to share the strengths and weaknesses. And I will just take it upon myself to be last. So if you would, if you could go first, Director Malm, I know that being last is hard once everybody's, we'll go that way. All right. I suppose I should let Becky go first.
I was going to say, maybe Becky goes first, we skip you.
With Dr. Bezek, I, his answers about budgeting and financial hardship, he is well versed in that. I liked how he was prepared. He was very intentional with what he said. He knows what he would do, how to communicate it. And also with his answers to our declining enrollment, he had also researched that and I really appreciated that. And I liked how the, he did the enrollment study or survey with the people who had left and what we can do to get them back. Mark at Hastings, tell our story. I really, he was so enthusiastic with all that.
All right, so there was a lot that stood out to me. So I was really able to glance into his, into Dr. Bezek's ability as a successful principal and what he could potentially do as a superintendent within Hastings, especially towards the end, specifically with the, the mental health and stress question that we had asked. So he, he said, you know, something to, I'm summarizing here. Addressing the needs of all students so that they are successful academically. Because, you know, there's, there's that component to feed into the academic side of everything. Which then kind of led into that scenario with a basketball player, you know, addressing that, let's focus on the facts here, that the individual, that the, one of the students is a basketball player is irrelevant to, to the assault. I'm glad that he was able to point that out. Looking at, you can tell he has experience in dealing with this. But you could also, I got the feeling just in his response that he's had positive resolutions in his position and that would translate over here.
Although these seem a little quippy, he had several statements that were just briefly said that meant a lot, like tell the story. Or when he was talking about what's the truth, how did we get there? What do we do to need, what do we need to do to make sure we don't get back here? And then there's a feedback loop built in. And that sort of thinking was very impressive to me and would transfer well from the superintendent's, pardon me, from the principalship to the superintendency.
I appreciated his answer on the, how do you recruit and retain quality staff? In that, in his answer and how to create a positive culture in order to do that. I also appreciate the fact that he comes across as a very authentic and approachable person.
I would agree with Director Tate that he does, he's got a great personality, he's very likable. He's approachable. I, from what, from the interviews, he seems easy to approach. I really liked the way that he answered our scenario question about the fight. Not to punish, but to change the behavior, that that is a focus that he has used in the past. And I, I really appreciated that.
In the conversation having to do with the blend of honoring tradition issue where the district is changing, kind of the Director Zuzik's point about some things seem, would you use quippy? Is that a word? Wow, that's, wow, quippy, I like it. Anyway, I thought it was great that, I mean, we all live here. And I thought he did a better job of defending the football stadium than we do. I'm like, wow, I was like, okay then, it's never leaving there. So I, but I, but in all seriousness, I thought that he truly seemed to understand the passion, why some things are the way they are, while saying, well, we also have to make sure we are prepared to integrate new types of things into those traditions so that people can see why those traditions are and why, since you're here now, you should appreciate this tradition too. And I really appreciate the way he laid that out.
I was really struck by Dr. Bezek's answer to question number 17 with regard to definition of educational equity. I felt his response was spot on and it was talking about filling gaps of each student. The, as they come prepared and fill the gaps that they need so that they can be successful. And I also felt, while he, he comes across as a very approachable person, that in response to that question, you saw his heart for students. I saw his heart for students when he answered that question. When he talked about how could you not respond? How could you see a student struggling and choose not to respond? How could you, that was just such a heartfelt and such a student centered and such an authentic response. It, it shone out to me throughout the course of the interview. And I also felt like in that question where it talks specifically about how do you talk about equity with a group that may not value it in terms of providing resources to it? He had identified and looked into data on the fact that putting students that may have fewer of those gaps in a similar educational setting, that they were also more successful. And that it's not, it's not a question of advancing one student over another student, but, but allowing staff and innovative approaches can advance all students. And I felt like that was, I just really saw his heart for education and his professional experience in that answer. And then I think it's meaningful. And I think he is authentic when he speaks to that this is a position that he wants. He doesn't want a superintendency, he wants a superintendency at Hastings. And he's done, he's looked into who we are and what we are and the challenges that we face. And he see, he wants to be a part, he wants to be a part of our story and he's prepared to carry that. And I, those are the two things that hadn't already been spoken to. And I, those are the two things that hadn't already been spoken to, that I thought were very strong in his interview tonight. And with that, I'd ask if there's any other people that would like to add additionally to the strengths of our candidates before we move to reference checking. Director Tate, and then we'll come back.
I appreciate that he has, and I know Director Bysel touched on this, but I appreciate that he does have several years of experience with having to make budget reductions.
When he, at the very beginning of the interview, when he circled back, he talked a lot about filling in the gaps, filling in the gaps for kids, talking about each home situation is different. Sometimes there's just you, sometimes there's three or four brothers. And just where, as a district, we need to make sure that we're identifying and filling those gaps for each and every child, whatever their situation happens to be, and making sure we're filling in for whatever needs to be filled in for, which I thought was nice.
So in the question about addressing controversial issues and prepping the board, there were three things that really struck out to me. And we've had conversations as a board about this, with building trust, making sure that there's two-way communication, and then ensuring that there are no surprises, so that we all come to the table with all the information, the latest and greatest, and that, you know, we're not surprised by something like, he gave the example of at the grocery store, that somebody comes up, and that happens, right? So making sure that there are no surprises and that we're communicating with each other. There's that open line, and I feel like he would be approachable in that aspect.
I'm not sure if this was said, but he said he hasn't sat in the seat of a superintendent, but he can do the job. I appreciate how he was very confident that he can step up and do the role. And I also really liked how he said for retaining quality staff and keeping them, train them, support them, empower them, but not micromanage them. And I think that our staff, we have great staff at creating that positive environment, and then letting, train them, support them, but also let them do their job as well. I liked how he worded that.
Thank you. I'll circle back. Chair Hedin, you mentioned equity. I just want to say that his understanding of equity was very complex and thorough. And Brian, you talked about, or pardon me, Chair, Director Davis, you talked about gifts and gaps. And I just thought that his, just his mindset on equity was very thorough and complex, as equity is thorough and complex.
I know a couple of you have already spoke to Dr. Bezek's response to the stress, mental health, and behavioral issues question. And he shared a perspective that I hadn't heard, and maybe I've heard it before and it didn't penetrate, but I heard it tonight when he said it, which is that the COVID, the situations around COVID and what that looked like in students in schools, it delayed adults' ability and the school's ability to get students the services that they need. And I just thought that that, that sort of flip of the perspective, it wasn't about the students not being prepared, it wasn't about the students having fallen behind, it was about the adults that wrap around and care for students were put in this challenging situation, and we were not able to identify the needs that students had. And so it would not be unexpected for there to be mental health, behavioral challenges that result from that. And I think that awareness and that just de-escalates the, kind of the energy, the negative energy around blame and accountability, and just says, we just, we're going to get in there and we're going to solve this, there's an identified gap. And I really appreciated that perspective because, to me, that too represented a, like, here's a problem we can solve in a collaborative opportunity, the way that it was presented as opposed to a argumentative response to student behavior. I very much appreciated that.
I just want to feed off that a little bit. I really liked how he said, you know, he wants to build a positive environment, but like with this mental health, behavioral issues, he gave the example of a teacher saying, oh, you're here today. Well, it makes that kid feel less about themselves. So really empowering the students as well. I like how he said, be kind to these students, you don't know what's going on. But I really liked how he's, you know, brought up that example of, don't point out the negative, bring out the positives in the kids. Kids need more positive than negative these days.
Do we have any additional input from board members at this time with regard to Dr. Bezek? Seeing none, I would ask for some feedback from our reference checking group.
So a quick summary of that, thematically, with one set of research, we found out that he has been very effective with discipline and that he's grown tremendously in the past several years. He trusts his subordinates, and he is authentic and good at navigating a split community. This statement I'm going to read as is. Dr. Bezek is a good listener, he has great personality, and he's very likable. He's engaged in his portion, pardon me, in his position as a principal, and is visible to students and staff. Every high school student knows Principal Bezek in a positive way. And thematically, from another group of people, we learned that he is relationally amazing, just the number of relationships he has and the depth of those relationships is incredible. He is very child-centered, and he, a person in particular went on and on and on about equity-related thinking and how well-prepared Dr. Bezek is.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I feel like that's far away. Does anybody have any additional items upon a few moments of reflection that they would like to add as strengths that they heard? I want to make sure we give sufficient time to that. I know the candidates gave us good consideration and time. Our next step, and again, we're following the same process that we used following the first round of interviews, is I'd be interested, we'll share individually around the table, who you would be leaning towards for your final selection, and we're going to see if some identified consensus begins to build. And then we can certainly continue conversation as we do that consensus building. And I will let whoever feels comfortable starting, start. Director Dressley. That was very fast. I imagined in my mind, I imagined a pause, like a thoughtful pause, but no.
She's ready.
All right. I'm going to pick me, pick me, Director Dressley.
Thank you very much. I would truly like to see Dr. Tamara Champa come back and be our superintendent.
Admittedly, this is really hard. I can, during the interviews and over the last few weeks, not to get too reflective, but I can see both of them fitting into our district very well. So this does not, this decision or opinion does not come easy. I would, however, like to see Dr. Champa come to Hastings.
I might be forced to start going in order. Director Zuzik.
Just a related thought, I too agree that both of them are ready, from the position that they're at, to come in and be the superintendent in Hastings on July 1. And it is a very slight favor that I give to Dr. Champa. But that's not to say that I wouldn't be comfortable with Dr. Bezek too, if, for any number of reasons it didn't work out.
So for a commitment to going in order, I will go next. Because I was like, I wonder if there's a way I could skip myself. But that looked ethical. And the answer is no. I would be very, very comfortable with either of these candidates, and I am amazed at the strengths and the passion and the commitment that they bring to the district. I am at a marginal place, and I actually have a very slight lean to Dr. Bezek. Again, I would be comfortable with either candidate, but looking at the responses in whole to the questions in the interview and the reflection on readiness, I have a slight So, I mean, this feels, I will acknowledge that this feels like a very vulnerable thing to say in public. But that's why we're choosing to be at the table. We've asked to be here and we've chosen to be here, and it, but it's, and this is, I would characterize this as very close. So I hope you can go. Okay, thank you, Director Davis.
I just got a piece, you just like that, I love it. To echo off of Chair Hedin's sentiment, it's, I just want to say that it's really difficult. And I'd like to say for the record that this is MSBA's fault that it's so difficult, because you did a great, you guys did a really good job. I mean, you really did. You did, thank you. I mean, if it's hard, it means you did well. I, and I've been going kind of on the seesaw, you know, I went through the first round, and now we're in the second round. And I think that each candidate brings wonderful things to the table. And I think there's a slight edge, depending on which component of the job you're looking at, where each one has a little slight edge over the other, but they're slight, they're remarkably slight. And, you know, based up on that piece, and just kind of what in my own minds I am thinking right now, I would be comfortable with either one, but I'm going to say right now, my inclination is slightly toward Dr. Bezek.
I'm just looking at our leadership profile, what we put out there to kind of make my decision. I was set until today. They both are amazing candidates. I could see either one of them sitting in the chair. But after listening last week and then today, I'm also siding with Dr. Bezek.
First, I'd like to just ask everybody at the board table to Director Bysel's point to pull forward your leadership profile. And I'm not asking this in a, in an effort to sway anybody's expressed opinion. I just want to, I think that's a good checkpoint, and I had, as you were speaking, I had just pulled it forward. Let's just take a moment and recheck ourselves against the leadership profile that was built through our stakeholder report, and then the work that we did around the table to build a leadership profile. So we're just going to give ourselves, what we'll feel like forever, but is probably 30 We'll just continue the discussion for a little bit, and I would ask Ms. Dorn, if, as an observer of the discussion, you see maybe a plateau building or something? If you have some professional expertise to help us navigate off that plateau, I would certainly appreciate your interjection. But so as I reread the leadership profiles, and quite honestly, as I focus my attention on the stakeholder survey, I can see to Director Davis's point, when you look at the strengths of our candidates, they are in slightly different categories. And I think we can hear that in the response to their questions and their demonstrated As I look at budget and finance, and I look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, we heard experiences from both candidates. I think they're a little bit different. And I was, what I'm going to say next goes against my slight lean, just know that I know that. As I look at collaborative leadership and I reflect on the feedback from the reference calls, and please, please correct me if I misheard, Director Zuzik, I think there was in the calls with Dr. Champa that there was speaking to that collaborative leadership building within the community and moving from a place where there maybe was less trust in a district to a place where there is currently high trust in the district under her leadership. Is that accurate?
Not that same thought, not continuing on the same thought. I have a close acquaintance that told me, and they are very familiar with school leadership. And one of the things that has just stuck with me is that you get the superintendent that you need for the time that you're hiring the superintendent. The problem is times change, and you can't, you can't switch boats. You have the person there. And so which of the candidates has the most significant over time and resilient skills on that stakeholder survey, looking at budget and finance? And diversity, equity, inclusion, I think that they both have strengths in different areas. But as a district, the one place you can't go wrong is budget and finance. There's many places you can't go wrong as a district. But that is, that is a wrong that tips districts over completely. And kids are hurt in the process. So I, again, I continue to favor Dr. Champa. So I, again, I continue to favor Dr. Champa over Dr. Bezek, although they're both fine candidates.
And I realize that this is just one tool. But one of the things that was made loud and clear is that we need to try to eliminate the split that we have within the community. And when I look at the, what is this called? EMD, EMD results. To me, it looks like there is one candidate who is, who we can all come together on definitely. And the other candidate is not, not quite there yet. So the EMD reflects that there were more favorable responses with Dr. Champa. And that we, how can I say this? That all seven of us responded higher. I'll say that.
So one of our stakeholder, one of the high points that they wanted, that stakeholders were concerned about was collaborative leadership. And I get that from Dr. Champa. I get that the way she explains what she has done in the past in her schools, the surveys, the tours. I just feel like that's a collaborative leadership together. All stakeholders' input before making decisions. I think those are all signs of a collaborative leader. And I, that's, I still would like to see her come back.
I'd be interested in hearing if Directors Beisel, Malm, or Davis have anything to add upon our reflection on the leadership profile and the stakeholder survey.
This is almost as brutal as budget adjustments, just putting it out there. So I, throughout the interviews, I was looking at this through the lens of what is best for our students and our staff. I would like to see Dr. Champa here because of what she's implemented within her district. And I can see that resonating very well here to support all student success. Not just student success too, but the other stakeholders that are key components, the community, the parents. We are loud, we are proud. And that is something that's a point of pride, I think, within Hastings is that we are so involved within our district, within our community. And I see her growing that. Not saying that Dr. Bezek won't. I just see her ready to jump into that and grow that right now. And yes, it is something that is a need right now. But to your point, how does that look five, 10, 15 years down the road? If we are able to bridge that gap right now, imagine how much further we're gonna be in the future. I don't want to tread these waters anymore. I want to see us, our community come together for what is best for our students. And I see, I really do, I see both of them being successful, but I really see Dr. Champa really being successful in that aspect. For all students, really. Sorry, I'm gonna go off on a tangent here too. But being deliberate and intentional. It wasn't just, to me, what I gathered out of the interview, it wasn't just, I'm going to do this things, these things. It's, I have done these things and I'm going to continue doing these things regardless of where I go. And then not rushing to failure. She gives a prime example of, you know, when the question about equity came about. Well, what does that even mean? How are we defining that? And she mentioned, and I found this as a tremendous strength, is really getting to the heart of what that means for the community, for the students. And then not rushing to failure to make a decision and change. That I see as a really good fit within our community.
Directors Beisel or Davis?
Director Beisel and Director Davis, just if you feel comfortable, is there anything that stood out to you about Dr. Bezek over Dr. Champa that kind of swayed your position? That you would feel comfortable sharing?
They're both amazing candidates. And how you expressed that Dr. Champa collaborative leadership, that I feel that with Dr. Bezek as well. I mean, he talks about kids, my word is my bond. He, for collaborative leadership, he trains, supports, empowers the staff. He made an example of how he sat in talk with janitors today. A lot of times we talk about our teachers and then like the district office. We don't ever really talk about, or they don't get talked, you know, I don't know how to word this, I'm not trying to offend anybody. But getting out there and knowing everybody, the whole picture, the whole story. And the pride of Hastings in him was amazing. The tradition, the wanting to excel off that, but also if we need to change off that, holding that tradition, but, and then exploring different avenues from that. His answers tonight were just spot on. He was so prepared with, and he had great examples. I was skewed the other way until tonight. So I could go both ways. I just, it's like I'm arguing your side of, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want to do that. But I, tonight, I just, the passion with him and his answers and the quippies. That just, and I guess Hastings is, we need change. But I think, I mean, they're both adequate enough to do it. So that's why what I saw, and then looking at, you know, the leadership profile and everything, I just put that together. And that's my way of thinking is that after the two interviews, that's why I went to Dr. Bezek.
It's not something that necessarily works to, the way you positioned the question, Director Malm, or Vice Chair Malm was basically what's weighing you a little bit more toward Dr. Bezek. It's not even so much that, it's, I've done this before too. It's amazing how history repeats itself. We had 29 questions in total, and I'm hung up on her response to one out of 29. That's all I can say about it. I'm hung up on that, I'm trying to get over it.
As a person who sat at the table with you, I hear what you're saying clearly. And I had a visceral response to that response. I will say that for me, this was about Dr. Bezek stepping forward tonight with more complex responses, more responses to questions with regard to budget, equity, and staff retention that were well thought out and in depth. But I, at the same time, I hear you.
It is a tough decision. The only contract length you can offer is up to three years. I appreciate the conversation about longer range plans and goals, et cetera. It will depend upon, three years from now, how the candidate is feeling and how you're feeling as well. One of the things that I really appreciate about the conversation is not just your thoughtful responses, the turning to the leadership profile. Thank you, Director Beisel. And the stakeholder survey as your guide. That's the first thing we usually suggest. And you've done that, and I really truly appreciate that. I would remind you that in the stakeholder survey, it did come through loud and clear that people are clamoring for unity. And I would encourage you to remember that as a board. Not required by any means to be unanimous. It's a good step toward healing if it is, no matter what decision it is. And you also, because of the quality of these candidates, you might want to consider that Plan A, Plan B motion. You're not guaranteed negotiations with your ultimate choice are successful. And when you have two people this strong, I'm not saying that a Plan B candidate would accept the offer if the first, for some reason, falls through. That's not always true, but it is sometimes true. And if you have two people this good, I'd encourage you to think about that motion. You don't have to use it either, but that's just something else to think about. And then finally, way back when, this has been a long couple of months. You put in a lot of work with this, I understand that. If you remember in interview training, we talked about deliberation scenarios and what would you do if? And what would you do if the board is relatively split on a final candidate? You're doing a wonderful job of not digging in your heels, of not turning to deficits, because I don't think that's necessary in this case. You're identifying strengths that one candidate has over another in several areas for both candidates. So I appreciate your willingness to work together toward a solution. Because the scenario training that we went through when there is two high-quality candidates and some differences of opinion, doesn't always go this well. So I want to commend you on your work in this regards. I don't have the answer for you. I can't tell you what to do. I would just keep going back to that survey and the stakeholder report. And what is more immediately your priority? I think to your point, Director Malm, things can change in a year or two or three. What is the more immediate need you have amongst all of the needs that you have? Because there are many. That would be my only word of advice beyond that.
I have a question for Ms. Dorn. The stakeholder survey sheet that we're looking at, are these three listed in order? They are in order. If these are indeed listed in order, then I am going to pivot my preference to Dr. Champa with a caveat that there needs to be a conversation. I just want to be clear, just want to make sure I'm clear that I am, because to Director Beisel's suggestion and all of us utilizing this profile, using the stakeholder survey, that's why. I'm trying to make sure I'm doing what this community put us here to do.
I actually have a question for Ms. Dorn. Is it okay if I share additional positive things from the references that I, yeah? Okay. So one of the references that I, some of the feedback that I received from one of the references is that Superintendent Champa is not polarized. She listens to all sides of an issue. She's a great superintendent. And I just think that the not polarized, I mean, she's going to listen to both sides. And even if she doesn't agree, you don't know that she doesn't agree. She's gonna listen to you and hear you and work. She's not gonna let her personal feelings get in the way of listening to both sides and being fair.
You certainly can. We could take another brief recess. If the reference checkers are comfortable just sharing notes, you're welcome to pass those amongst yourselves. All of your notes, all of your board notes, all of the reference checks will be turned in at the conclusion of the search to your HR department. You've got data retention policies and all of that, so all of those will be turned in. So you're certainly welcome to take a look at those if you'd like to. I had one more thought, now I can't, oh. The other option you have, which I've seen happen once in a couple of years, is to call a recess overnight and reconvene tomorrow to see if there's more clarity. Doesn't usually happen. It might be one thing to consider though, is to just reconvene tomorrow. That's a choice.
I want to maintain an open mind and believe that we can come to an agreement. And I would like to, and not have it be tomorrow. So to respect Director Beisel's request, I would ask that we adjourn until, or not adjourn, excuse me, recess for approximately five minutes. We'll come back shortly after 8:15. And if we could just glance at references, those of us who did not have an opportunity to speak to those people. Thank you, we'll reconvene in roughly five minutes. Thank you. We'll reconvene in roughly five minutes. All right, so we're going to come out of recess at what I think is 8:20, based on at least one of the clocks in this room. So, thank you for the suggestion. We did, as a board, take time to look at the reference notes, reference call notes were provided by our board member team and had briefly had a moment or two to reflect upon them. Is there? So let's advance that conversation again. We're still looking at if we can identify a candidate that that we could, to be blunt, unanimously support going forward to be superintendent in our district. And again, we've had two very strong candidates, and I think we have a very difficult decision in our hands. But be interested to see Director Beisel and myself if there was a thought after reviewing the findings.
Well, I just want to say thank you to you guys for letting us read those and taking the time to write all that out. It was really helpful. And again, these two are amazing candidates, but after reading or going through the reference checks, I would, I'm going to change my answer to Dr. Champa.
So I'm committed to to being to working towards unanimity on the board and healing in the community. And again, I feel both candidates are quite strong. Given that I would support identification of Dr. Champa as our selected superintendent, I would ask that we consider adopting a motion that's a, has a Plan B component in it. I think we have a couple here. I don't know if you'd do that, but again, I want to thank everybody for putting their time into this. And I, and I do feel like throughout the process, it's been a commitment to the students and a commitment to our shared values.
We ready? Okay. I move to extend the offer of an employment contract for the position of Hastings Superintendent to Dr. Tamara Champa contingent upon the following, that a mutually agreeable employment contract is negotiated and a criminal background check is completed with the results acceptable to the school board. In the event that the chair determines a mutually agreeable employment contract is not attainable, the chair is authorized to extend the offer of an employment contract for the position of Hastings Superintendent to Dr. John Bezek contingent upon the following, that a mutually agreeable employment contract is negotiated and a criminal background check is completed with the results acceptable to the school board. Second?
Is is there any discussion? I would make only I'm going to grant myself the mic since I have it. I want to make sure that in the in the reading of that motion, that while the Plan B is an extension from the chair, I'd like to remind everyone that we have identified Director Zuzik as our lead person to negotiate. And I would, in the event that a mutually agreed-upon contract was not achievable, he would provide me that information, and then I would, I would sort of turn that responsibility back, you know, we'd make the contact, and we'd turn that negotiation responsibility back over to to Director Zuzik, just for for clarity's sake. So everybody understands what process I would use. Okay. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in, oh, I'm sorry, Carrie.
I personally, I don't see these two candidates as being all that close. And for me, Dr. Champa has ultimately set a bar, I think. And I am, I am not in favor of offering Dr. Bezek the contract should she not accept.
To communicate my conscience, I agree. However, I'm not fully opposed to the Plan B. And I would vote yes to it, but I do express very similar concern.
I would agree with Director Tate and Vice Chair Malm. I'm going to leave it at that.
I, I just want to put in there that I would want us to work very hard to make sure that, I know this is in there, the way it's proposed or the way it's been proposed, but I want to be, I really would love to have all seven of us on the same side of this thing. So whatever we need to do to get to all seven of us, if it takes a little bit longer, I'd like to try to get there.
Director Davis have just commented that I think we're all in favor of number one, which is a great place to be, you know? And, and God willing, we won't have to look at a Plan B option. And so one thing is that that domino has to fall. And maybe we could reconvene if necessary.
Agreed. I just, I just know that what what's going to be on paper, and I know it sounds petty, but I also lived here 20 years, it's going to say six to one. I understand exactly what you're saying, Director Zuzik, but on the paper, it's going to say that this was a six to one vote. It's not going to say, oh, seven over the first person is six. It's not what it's going to say. It's going to say six, one. And I know we're working on showing seven out and showing that collective opportunity for, to use Chair Hadeen's tone, words, healing around that whole idea of us coming together. And I feel like that, I know it's, I know it's a micro fracture in the second part of the motion, but it's still there.
I wonder if it might be Vice Chair Malm and Director Dressley, I think, made an second in the motion. Is that right? Who seconded? Becky did. I wonder if we could amend it, amend the initial motion to just have the first part, that that a job offer would be extended to Dr. Champa to be the next school district superintendent for Hastings. And then not do the Plan B part of it. I think that there's unanimity toward that direction.
I agree with that. I do want a Plan B, just in case. I don't want to be sitting here all summer long doing this again. So do we, what's our Plan B? If we can't all agree with sending an offer to Dr. Bezek, I think we need to come up with a better plan than just having one just in case in the world we live in today. I just think we should do that.
There, there is, and Ms. Dorn, if you would be able to, am I able to do that? Steal your thunder. So in the case of an unsuccessful negotiation with a selected candidate, you could reconvene and discuss whether to make a motion to any of the other candidates that were in the pool or make an offer. If not, we will help you find an interim for the coming year and relaunch the search probably in December or January of 2023 and 2024, at no cost to the district. We would redo the search if necessary next search season and help you find someone to step in for one year to keep the wheels on the bus, moving in the direction you'd like. Usually, the person coming in as the interim is not necessarily looking for the long-term job. It might be someone who's just there as a placeholder. It does cost you some time with an interim sometimes because they're not the type to necessarily take on some great big new initiatives, strategic plan changes. It hits the pause button, but you would have a superintendent for the 2324 school year, and we would redo the search again. That's an option for you.
I don't know if this would work. We've done interims as well, and then we hired. So we've gone through this process. If there's, I don't know if this would even, like I said, work. If Plan A doesn't go accordingly, Plan B to offer Dr. Bezek the interim superintendent while we search. We've interviewed him. I don't know if he'd ever do it, but I, then how do you go back and hire another? We have to do this whole process, and we're rushed because it's almost June. And to get somebody here by July 1st. That's, those are my concerns, but not saying that we rush to hire if if there's a willing to do that.
Thanks for bringing that up. The interim search that was done, I don't even, three and a half, four years ago, was sort of an official search because it was for a position in anticipation of the full-time job. And it was a mid-year search. Someone took the interim position in January, if I recall correctly. This would be a little bit different. Most interim searches are far more informal. We do have names of retired superintendents that are willing to step in as a placeholder for one year. And there, there may be some in this part of the state that would be able and available to do that for you. I can't guarantee it. It would be a far less arduous process than you went through last time for your interim, though, partly because of the timeframe and partly because the normal contract year of July to June would be this interim position. It was very complicated three and a half years ago because it was a January to the end of June position. So we needed to do more formalized efforts. Does that make sense?
I think, Mark, so can, would you consider it a friendly amendment to where we do?
Yes, I would be, I would, Stephanie and Becky. So we, we would. If, if that is, I would make it a motion, and then we would seek a second, and then we'd deal with this before we do the other one. So we'd be, and we'd be looking for a second at this point.
Seconded, Director Dressley.
So for purposes of clarity, the motion on the table is to remove from the previous motion the portion of the amendment, the portion of the motion that speaks to in the event that the chair determines a mutually agreeable that the chair determines a mutually agreeable employment contract is not attainable on to the end, it was the second paragraph of the motion that 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 be struck. So we have a motion on us and a second to strike that Plan B. Is there any discussion? So I'm, I'm going to say that it is probable that I would not be in support of that motion, although I hear the discussion because I feel like we've made a significant commitment and I do feel that they, that Dr. Bezek is a close candidate. That being said, I do not anticipate opposing the final motion with the modification. So and I have every interest in reaching a mutually agreeable contract with our primary search candidate. And I just want to articulate my position on that. I understand how that may or may not play in the public, but across the course of everything that we evaluated, I would, I feel it's in my conscience to vote in support of the Plan B that we have currently identified. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to vote on the motion on the table, which is to strike the second paragraph of the previous motion, which is essentially identified as Plan B. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Can we get some clarity on that? It wasn't a friendly amendment. It was made as a motion. Okay. We said, yeah, could we? All those in favor signify by saying, all of those in favor of modifying the amendment signify by saying aye. The, the motion on the table is to strike Plan B. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In favor, we have Directors Tate, Director Dresley, Director Davis, and Director Mom. Opposed, same sign. I think I'm considering changing that. Aye. Directors Bysel, Director Hadeen, and Director Zuzik in, in opposition to that amendment. The amendment passes. The motion, as it remains on the table, is to offer, make an offer to candidate Dr. Tamara Champa pending mutually agreed upon contract and a agreeable background check. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is the adjournment our next item? I'm sorry, I closed my, we need to, we, we have, we're going to, we're going to take, no, I believe we take a short recess. We're going to take a short recess and Ms. Dorn and I are going to step out and make a phone call and we will be back within the course of the meeting.
Those motions at school board inception.
All right. So we're going to come back out of recess. I have 8:48 on my, this time I'll use my computer clock just to keep it mixed up and different. Ms. Dorn and I were able to reach Dr. Champa and she's accepted our offer to enter into negotiations. And she wants to share her gratitude with regard to the offer. And she looks forward to working with the district and growing with each of us. So we're going to take a breath. So the, the things that will remain, yeah, I know, I'm just like, I feel really drained, but I am excited. Just so you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not demonstrating right now because I'm just really wiping out, but so the next steps that I anticipate and maybe Ms. Dorn will speak to this, but spoke to, she'll be receiving an email that will facilitate the background check. She expects a call from Director Zuzik to enter into contract negotiations. I will remind everybody at the table on the board that we have tentatively scheduled a special meeting on Wednesday, May 31st at six o'clock to approve the contract that we will hopefully be able to negotiate with our preferred candidate. And prior to adjournment, Ms. Dorn has something that she'd like to share with the board? Yeah, please do.
I just want to express my gratitude to Director Mohn for her help in the contract as well. Based on the parameters that the board agreed to, I wanted to have somebody else's eyes looking at it and that made sense. And, and just so that you know, a, a proposed contract has gone out to legal consult and we're waiting their approval of it. And we anticipate that that will happen and we'll get it back likely tomorrow. But, and I'll let Dr. Champa know that.
Thank you. Director Dresley?
Thank you very much for your work on that, Mark, and Director Mohn, thank you.
Ms. Dorn?
Congratulations. That's wonderful news. It doesn't always go that way where someone is honored to accept the opportunity to enter into negotiations. So congratulations. She really truly was very excited. So I also want to congratulate you on the unanimous vote. That really showed leadership. This board did a wonderful job of being not just thoughtful, but honest and reflective and recognizing the diverse opinions around the table. We always say diversity of thought is a true strength on a school board. And I think you came together as one tonight and did a beautiful job of arriving at a unanimous decision for the leader of your district next. So congratulations on that. We will initiate the background check first thing in the morning. Sometimes depending upon how, how much digging it takes for them to do to confirm the educational credentials and things like that, what takes so long is they call every university to make sure they have the degree they say they have. They call every job to make sure, and that kind of thing takes some time because it's phone calls. If for some reason the results are not back by next Wednesday, but you have a contract that has been negotiated successfully, you can certainly approve the contract contingent on that background check coming back. So you don't need to schedule another meeting to approve it. You can approve it contingent on that final checker background check. Okay? So don't let that hold you up in case it takes longer than expected. It's usually five days. I hope, might be sooner than that. I will contact Dr. Bezek on your behalf and thank him very much for his participation in the interview and share all of the positive things you shared with him on his background and his experience and perspective that he brought to this as well. I will send a press release in the next five minutes to Chair Hadeen and Becky to issue throughout your normal communications channels and hopefully get the word out as well. We've talked about turning in your board notes, et cetera, to keep in accordance with data retention policies here in Hastings. So do, do turn all of those in and thank you for that. I want to also thank everyone who is involved in those tours today. Becky in particular, it was a lot of work to coordinate that, but the students had helped with the tours, the administrators that took folks through buildings, the folks who took them through downtown. I think that made a really great impression. So thank you for the help with the tours today. If it's okay with all of you, we are always trying to improve the services we have in executive search. So I have a very short survey. I'm just going to shoot to all of your emails tonight. It takes about two minutes to fill it out. Any and all feedback, what went well, what could have gone better would really be appreciated. I'm going to send it to all board members as well as Becky as our point of contact. So if you could just take a few minutes to fill it out, it doesn't have to be tonight or tomorrow, but within the next week or two, if you could provide me with your very honest feedback, I would truly appreciate your help with that. I do want to give a shout out to Becky as the glue that held us together internally. Well done and thank you for your help. It was a pleasure working with you. It's a lot of work to be the point person inside a search and you did a great job. Similarly, I'd like to give another shout out to Chair Hadeen. It's also a lot of work and a lot of pressure to be the chair during the superintendent search and you did a wonderful job. I enjoyed working with you and you facilitated the conversation beautifully. So thank you for that as well. Our post-hiring workshop, you're not done with me yet, will be this fall. So I'm going to plan to come back. I'll reach out and schedule it this July or August. Usually we have those in September, October, maybe November at the latest, where we will work with the new board team to talk about expectations for the first year. It's based on our performance evaluation process, our recommended standards and elements-based process. And we'll work together as a team to make sure that you're all on the same page about what you expect from your new superintendent, how you can support them in their work and make sure that the district is heading where you want it to go as a board. So I will see you again in person this fall for the post-hiring workshop. With that, our official role in your search is done. I'll exit stage left unless for any reason we do need to come back and visit about a Plan B, in which case I will I'll exit stage left unless for any reason we do need to come back and visit about a Plan B, in which case I will be happy to return and visit with you about that. That not happening, I've loved working with all of you. It's nice to see you, nice to meet those of you I haven't worked with before. And it's been an honor for MSBA to assist with this. So congratulations is the biggest word I want to offer and thank you is the second biggest two words I want to offer. You should be tired. You should be exhausted mentally. It's emotionally and physically a tough job to do. Choosing a leader when you have two candidates that good. So congrats and kudos. Turn back over to Chair Hadeen.
Well, I'm going to, one, please, everybody, take time to share the, your feedback. I know how valuable it is and I know everybody's perspective was different. And I think they would not be individually valuable. I want to thank MSBA and particularly Barb Dorn. And, and for those of you who had not gone through the process before, I think it's very evident, the value that they add and how near impossible this would be without their insights and expertise and commitment to the schedule and commitment to students and commitment to supporting the board. So thank you very much. I know you have a lot going on and you make it look like you're just, you're, you're just in our moment and you're supporting us and you've provided such great insight and such immediate response to any questions throughout the process. And so thank you in return. And again, thank you to Becky. We, we know that that's a thing you don't want to do every three, three and a half years, depending how frequently we feel like we need to do it here. Are there any further comments tonight? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Do you have comments? Director Tate?
Actually, I just have a question regarding the notes that we have to turn in. Is it just the candidate notes or like everything, including our general notes about like scheduling and all that kind of stuff? It's everything?
I know everything is a lot, logistical stuff about when to show up and where. It can be difficult sorting through that. Sometimes it's easier to just turn over everything and let your district personnel sort through what's HR and what is just not. I would recommend everything just to err on the safe side. You never know. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. What about superintendent trading cards?
All right, I would entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Director Davis, second Director Dresley, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. See everybody back here tomorrow, 6 o'clock, regular work session.